Don't, don't our bills go out with the real estate value than land value?
Yes.
You mean you eat, you can eat.
We'd have to.
Oh, the board is, this, Bill and.
The bill and the inspector, you'll zone in an ordinance.
And that's the, that's another question.
But hell, he's only gonna go back, he's not gonna go any police, he's not looking for it, right?
So, so I call, I tell Bo, I said, man, you got something going on up there on that abandoned house. And Bo says, well, I'm not doing that. So I called county inspector, he goes out, and indeed, there's, there's glass pipes ringing Bo's house from the floor down. And so that's a problem to me.
So, are we gonna also shoot the police department to mandate them to make these reports? Give us a money.
Oh, yeah.
We got to have them.
Yeah.
This is the ordinance, the only way, but he said it has to be, they have to turn it.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
It's gonna be a cooperative effort between several different parts of the county.
It's gonna take a lot of hammering out to make it so everybody's.
So the police.
Our intention is to, to take care of what, how do we get.
But it's two different, two different deals.
Criminal nuisance.
That's right.
And derelict building.
What about agricultural buildings, like old chicken houses? Uh, the old tobacco bongs, those types.
We stand away from agriculture in this initial draft.
Well, that's why I asked, yeah.
Yeah.
If one of those.
Stand away from agriculture.
If one of those has some criminal nuisance in.
It will fall upon it then, under the criminal.
But as far as being a derelict act, no, I was talking.
That's why I asked the question, you said a hundred acres, I got a household, and I'm thinking, that's agriculture.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'll give you the example. Go VFW Danny Blackson, they had dugout after that. I would go out there and find crap. And that thing went on the ground quick, soon as I started finding it.
Let's get back to the other side of the criminal part. So you got a house that's been vacant for fifty years. There's no windows in it, there's no doors, and it's not been on it for twenty, thirty, or fifty years, I mean. Is that a nuisance to the county?
That's blank.
That's a derelict, so that's a derelict building.
But you cannot see it from the top of the trees, the doors around it.
No, nobody's gonna know about it, because it's based on complaint.
Yeah. I mean, we do not have the resources to wave this wand and enforce every.
When they cut the trees down there, across from the livestock market, all of a sudden, there was an old house there.
Right, exactly.
Nobody even knew.
So, so, you're telling me you gotta turn the house down, because it's gonna cost us? What about if the neighbor is trying to look at it, calling, what if it's a claim?
There you go.
And they need to look out.
But there's gotta be a reason.
I think when we get to this, guys, I think.
Not just looking at it.
We, we have to take the time and pay for the ads to go out, once we've adopted this ordinance, so people can see it. So it's not spot reported in any newspaper, social media, it needs to go out where they can read the entire ordinance.
Does this, does this require a public, uh?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. For them to come and address the public, the public can address the law.
Yes. We'll get one drafted, and then Bill and I will meet with the representatives from the three towns, and then we'll have the draft in their hand and see what they.
Like Ohio, I mean, that's a picture, that's a picture thing, man. A Ohio, you know what I mean, like the one you're talking about, you use a prime example, the one right across the stockyard, they cut trees down. They see Ohio, is anybody looking at it too? Yeah. And I think it's beautiful. Another man might think it looks bad.
All right, y'all ready to roll over?
But if hood rats up in there, then they need to do their magic.
That's right.
Just to wrap it up, so I'll get in touch with Mr. Elder, just to get a blank orange, uh, formed, and then I would pass out to you guys, give you a written, give you your thoughts.
And I want the citizens to reach out, come to me and meet him.
That's right.
And to talk.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't want everyone to vote for something, again, told me I was wrong, if you didn't tell me I was wrong, it's for me.
That's right.
People are begging for us to clean the community up, so that's what we're gonna do. It's gonna take hard measures, but you want it or you don't.
Yeah, um, and yeah, if you don't mind, Steve, if you would send an email out to the three towns, and ask if they would support somebody. To be with him and I, and we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to them to set dates, once they tell us who their appointees are, and set a date to meet with them. All right, now, if you want to roll to the rules of procedure, is that what you wanted?
Yeah, well, I see Buddy and him here, we could, we could talk a little bit about dispatch.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so I know it, it, it's been talked, it's been discussed between the board, and I know you, 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 some of y'all heard from the, I guess from your citizens, and maybe from the two volunteers, but maybe possibly, um, uh, putting the dispatching under, um,
Buddy.
Buddy, Buddy Hyde. Um, the only thing I do know that, you know, just trying to do a little bit of homework, um, if you, if, if you, you, you gotta get the sheriff to agree, if the sheriff disagrees, you lose five comp board positions. Uh, five paid by the state positions, they pay five dispatch. Um, that's what you got, that's, that's, that's your, that's your, that's your nuts of all.
Has he, uh, have you had that conversation with the sheriff?
I have not, but Buddy, uh, can you wanna? I don't think we've had any real honest conversation yet.
See, I said right here. Yeah. Yeah, we've done a little bit. Um.
By the way, Buddy, great job getting involved with the Mr. Guy today.
Oh, yeah.
Great job.
We, we didn't do much, we just knew the military operation.
Yeah.
They found him on forty-six, you were walking. Hmm, forty-six, yeah, okay. Um, but anyway, coordinated BMA on that. So, yeah, the only thing, uh, the sheriff and I just mentioned briefly, you know, did we know what was going on, or I was just kinda waiting for you move forward and say, you know, what, what the vision is, um, we've done some research, and obviously, what Steve alluded to is, you're comfortable with, you know, a lot of counties have used comp board positions for clerical, administrative tasks. So you don't lose them, it's just, you have to have an MOA. So what we really need to do is, if we, so they're gonna have a good conversation, you know, with law enforcement and sheriff, because there's a DCN piece to this, you know, the warrants and the way the, uh, the DCN comes in twenty-four hours. So, what you have is, you got paperwork that has to be done. And the comp board positions are there now, but they don't have to always be dispatched. And they do not have to be, I know that Halifax does this, and I think, oh, some other counties do, they don't have to be employees of a law enforcement agency, they can be employees of ours. Uh, but you have to have an MOA with, with how they're coming through.
All right, can we, can we get that, can we get with the sheriff and just get that?
Well, I think we, you know, we need to have a good, um, task group meeting, so, you know, have a group all working on this, and first, we need to sit in and have a conversation, you know, to iron out all of those components.
Right.
Because the components are, you know, nine-one-one is number one. Then you have things going on in nine-one-one, that's coming on a twenty-four hour basis, and it has to be on a secure type of platform, and that's what we're talking about. But as far as the comp board positions go, most counties around here have five. And it's really about the money, a lot of people, like I'll give you Dinwiddie, for example, and Bill may know this, um, Dinwiddie actually put some money towards the comp board position, because there are not enough, you know, to get the salaries competitive, so they, they give a little bit of county money to go along with comp board. So, so there's a mix there, every county deals with this, and everybody has.
All the, all the citizens, let's, let's have some clarity here. Why are we having this discussion?
Well, anybody can answer all of the same questions, I think you kind of presented it to us.
Yeah, there were some, uh, there's some lag time between calls and dispatch.
There's a lot of inconsistencies, there's some problems with dispatch, and emergency services, there's turnover, and we're getting ready to invest millions and millions on the system. We've got, we're spending money on dispatchers. We need to stay there, but we need that consistency, that there are a lot of issues that have come about.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw any of the individuals that come forward under the bus, but it's from all departments. I'll say it right now, it's from all five departments.
I've heard the same thing.
That'll request a.
It's a demanding, difficult job, but there's a lot of things that have happened just in the last couple of months, and it's a problem that's, that means somebody's lost. We've gotta have someone trained specifically to sit at that seat.
Ain't gonna do it.
That's not gonna make us change.
Hey Buddy, you're the man to run it.
Well, I appreciate your confidence, and I think, you know, for the team, you know, it's key, certainly leading the team's not, it's, it's not something that, you know, it's new to us, but honestly, our team numbers can be in different positions, and there's things that we can do. You know, obviously, records management is part of this whole piece, and you have a division for that, you know, it's, but there's a lot of ideas, and I know this in the meeting, you talked about it, but I think we do need to talk, we sit down with Sheriff Jones, sit down with, uh, the person that's in the temporary position of the dispatch coordinator, man, director. I don't know if it's temporary or permanent, but, yeah, someone's in there, yeah, I think he's.
And we all need to sit down and talk to them.
Yeah, and we don't need, we don't want two people, I need to be all over the talk, right?
Yeah, I would say either all of us, or either Steven.
We, we gotta support the sheriff as, as well as each one supports us.
And we, and we work closely with all of them, I mean, honestly, um, everybody that doesn't know what you just mentioned, you know, I, I deal with the five agencies all, all, all week, every day. You know, we, we get phone calls in from the leaders of each one of the fire EMS, we're all on text groups and all together, so we talk a lot, and then law enforcement is not immune, I mean, Sam Murphy's in contact with us a lot, so is Phil Morgan, so is, uh, Jake Herlong, I mean, you know, since day one, we talk to them on a regular basis. The, the key here is all using regulars, and the key is all of them receiving nine-one-one calls. And so that's where, you know, as long as in all of our discussions, we think about nine-one-one as a foundation here, and there's a lot of liability when nine-one-one does not go right. I mean, you're talking major liability when there's a call that does not go right. You can't fix it.
Incorrect agency, you feel the problem?
Well, you know, it could be life or death, and we're unfortunate, but, but again, you know, we're not, we're not saying any particular call isn't the one we're talking about, but this can happen, this can happen on any particular call. You know, having been the guy on the other side of the radio, you know, you receive the call, and you're talking to them at two in the morning, that's that voice. That voice at two in the morning is what we always describe in dispatch, you know, is that calmness, but it's also thinking ahead, trying to think ahead of us.
Being able to read, if someone's.
But I do wanna put this aside.
Give somebody CPR or walk through it.
Exactly. I do wanna put this aside, and, and the guys in the room, uh, Chief Sheen, he's leaving a golden call, call high right now, and.
Be safe, brother.
And Jimmy, Jimmy, um, uh, right-hand guy during the day, we all know that technology, these articles just came out this past month. The technology coming down the pipe is phenomenal, and we gotta get ready for it, we really have to get ready for it, um. We've got all these backholds working together, and we have them in Nottaway County now, like I am responding, it comes to the telephone. See, all of this comes to dispatch, they have a screen, so every app, every platform, and it's in our budget now, that we pay for these platforms, they all sync with each other. Nick, Nick, I just left it, Nottaway Emergency Squad, we had a rep there, and I talked to that rep, he's at Arali, and he told me, he said, what you're reading is right, buddy. He goes, we're getting ready to sync up with the rest of the industry, where all these platforms that we're paying for, a man will start working together, it's like several moving parts working together. So guess what, if we don't receive it correctly up here, across the street, and we don't embrace the technology and training on it, and things like that, those are things we have to look at going forward, um, being ready for it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I just, some suggestion, um, you know, let's, let's say this, uh, Sheriff Jones has a big responsibility.
Right.
And this board also, you know, we, we just, that's not this board, previous board, uh, brought, he started, he has to manage his resource officers, that's a, that's another load.
Yeah.
That's another load, and so, I, my suggestion is, is that we form a committee, two people, to, for this board, maybe the first meeting, Buddy won't be present, it's just, we, let's just sit down with the sheriff, tell, tell us what kind of problems he's been running into, what does he feel, how to be rectified, or, let's get the sheriff's back in. And he may come in, he's not gonna say anything in this meeting, which I wouldn't either, because he's got a big responsibility. Who's gonna sit in and say, well, it's, it's, somebody's still answering the phone, thank God, and somebody is still, but.
Are they though, are they though, Steve? Are they still answering the phone? Because that's the whole reason I brought the thing up, they was called twice until his phone quit ringing, and then they called back six minutes later and said, what you're emergency? So I don't know if they really answered the phone or not.
But you know.
Not a hundred percent of the time, they are not.
But if we, if we, if, if it does go up under, uh, Buddy Hyde, those problems will come with it. Yeah, and, and, well.
Yeah, they're gonna come with it, and then you gotta address it.
But that's.
But you're only good as your, your employee, it's not Sheriff Youngland answering that phone. You know, he, he's only as good, he, he can't do, the sheriff can't do with someone, and he's, and, and I found out too, he's not required to do it, but a very little bit, I think work one day a year, is that right?
I'm not sure.
I think he has to work one day a year.
All right, oh. Bo. Uh, me and, you wanna run with me, make the sheriff in?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right.
No, he's not on the way in.
I'll set that up. Set that up on Wednesday.
That'd be fine, Rick, like I will. And he, he business is stockyard. First, I, I, I like the sheriff, I think he's incredible.
Anyway, we can help the sheriff.
Absolutely.
If there's a way to resolve it, whether it's moving it to a group, or whether it's working with what we have, but it's been a lot of training. It's still not be able to respond to a call, to a comment there, answer the phone, tone the role before, that's too, uh, we gotta fix it.
But it's like, you know, in, in going back with Miss Norton, Miss Long, we, we, we're investing this radio system, somebody's gotta push that button. You know, their radio system, man, is not worth, is not worth.
And that person's got to be trained properly, and they need to speak it.
And we're fortunate, we have people like Mr. Sheen.
And I would say, I would say the sheriff is not hiring anybody that's not trained, I know, he, he would not, they still gotta perform their duty.
And it would help the sheriff, it'll take a little.
It may, that's what we wanna talk to him about.
So, so let's start, let's start with a conversation, honest conversation.
Be good.
We settled up for Tuesday, but.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with him, and, um, and then we can come in on the second meeting or third meeting, like I said, we, we've done some research, so with me, it's, it's, I would like to say, listen, keep this in the back of your mind, but this on radar, it's not a one-for-one, even if, if it's a change made, um, there's gonna have to be at some point a commitment, a financial commitment. I've been at an astronomical amount, I know money is financial, it's an issue with a lot of.
Don't you love the way he said that?
But the way, yeah, but, well, as you well know, what.
The radio thing, bro.
As you well know, the competitive salary is not the, on one of the issues.
It's also.
The competitive, I mean, you know, we like to say not, but competitive salaries are a lot like that in firefighting, there are EMS, there are police work, but they're also in dispatch.
Yeah, we see billboards all the time, it's like, hey, you wanna come work for justice, you're a police officer, come on.
Ridiculous, didn't wait to laugh.
Can I say we probably, you know, roughly, some of these counties around us in Southside Virginia, roughly three thousand or less than they probably should be, and, and I'm not putting, saying three thousand is the exact number, but if you look at that on an annual salary, it means a lot to a lot of people, and it is a professional, uh, name, the training they have, they have.
We're chasing, you know, we're chasing your tail, it's right.
Yes.
So we moved three thousand, you know, with Chesterfield?
Oh, I know, they moved three thousand.
That's right. Well, here, right, with Chesterfield, we're really good about it, right, if you follow that, maybe they have to.
You need to have people that are low, love Nottaway County, live here, wanna be close to the school, wanna be here in their community, and do, do the best what kids want.
That's right.
You start chasing the localities, that's why you move.
That's true, that's true.
It's a huge problem, I just went to Vaco last Friday, and the discussion in the room was this, and every person in that room represent, you know, like fifty counties, and have the same issue, but the problem, the difference, I'd say forty of them, out of all of them, already have paid services, we don't, it's coming down, like, we better be ready.
And we're paid on EMS, and we're very big soldiers, we got pretty big ass. Well, you know, John, a lot of people don't know this, John Shute was, uh, tried really hard, and, and he talks to me daily on Thursday, he has paid firefighting, a lot of people don't realize that. Because he, what he does is cross trains, and he, he's smart with this, I mean, I'll tell him, gee, shoot, if you're listening, you know what, I told you, um, he's smart with it, because they're cross-trained to do both trucks.
That's right.
And when you're dealing with five people turning or less during the day, uh, it's nice to have that cross-train piece, Dinwiddie did it years ago, I mean, it's just, it's one of those things, you just have to be. But, yeah, I, I welcome, we welcome, us and all of the, all the customers that I deal with, with the fire, EMS, and police, we welcome a real, a, a real improvement, and, and whatever that improvement is, we can put, we can put that in a, in a future conversation.
All right, well, thank you, Buddy, we would have been great, appreciate it.
Thank you for your confidence.
Yes, sir.
Since we're talking about EMS, um, all of us were invited tonight to a program in the fitness camp, because we're legal, um, I just wanna commend your, your area and Brandon Jenkins for the workshop, and being very innovative, this is the first, and you can elaborate on it, it's the first of its kind in state, and we had, what, eighty-five or ninety?
Yeah, I can give you your number?
Yes, please.
Well, I, I just came from that, that's why I was late, um, so I opened up on behalf of the county, I know you had to be here, um, we had a hundred and forty-three people virtual, and we had sixty in the squad building the crew, so we had, we had an audience of about two hundred tonight, we had them from Frederick County, Winchester, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Newport News, it's in Nottaway County right now.
And they're using this as a model for their dedication.
It was absolutely awesome. And we had our regional councils, the ones that are doing the drug boxes now, and, you know, having discontinued those, they were there as well tonight, just to hear what we had. But Brandon's teaching right now, and he's doing a phenomenal job with vendors over there, and they had pizza, good, well, I got a chance to get one slice.
Yeah, you got more hornbill than I got.
That's right. Uh, Steve, where you, you budget rules or health department or.
Rules of procedure.
Let's go there, sir.
All right.
You got, you, in your pack, you got copies of the, uh, Mason Amendment, basically what's in yellow is the changes.
One thing you owe me, though.
Is seven and eight. Uh, I don't think it's anything.
Nope.
Seven and eight.
Thank you, bud.
I would have buried that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, this is a living document, and you, you can make any change anytime, a lot of these, um, uh, these sections that has been added for your consideration, um, has been utilized through, uh, my connections through Vaco, and also through, um, uh, this, uh, County of Sussex, so, um, which, which, they have a pretty good rule of procedure, um, so do we, something, but, anyway, that's where your consideration to vote on, uh, or tonight, if you want to. Um, you might wanna take home and read it, and chump on it, and have discussions in the meeting, or you can ask, ask something now.
Miss Norton, I, I know you, when you and I talked the other day, you, you said that when you were down at Vaco, that I think you said it was eight.
Eight of the counties use this, and.
That's reasonable, right?
And they've all been approved by their attorney.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, and I did ask that question to you.
Well, I'll speak to it. I have had a dozen conversations since last month. Every one of those persons told me, their citizens, told me that it was egregious what happened to that. And I have to throw Jonathan the bus, they said, well, you know, maybe I don't always agree with Jonathan, what happened. So this is your First Amendment, but it's not your First Amendment to come up and insult people, and take your, your personal anger, you know, for the fourth, so, I'll go for it when time comes.
I've had the same conversation with this people as well, same reference.
I had to, I had a situation, I was in a group setting, about fifty people, and about of the fifty, twenty of them didn't do it, and they were very upset.
Well, they're due business, do that.
They want us to just do business, and get it done.
That's what we're here for.
That's exactly right.
All right, it'll be, it, it'll be in, if you look at, and make sure that it's in on the agenda Thursday night, and be.
Put it before the delegation from the.
Okay. Take care of it, sir. All right, all right, if anything, if anything you see later on, you can, you can feel free to call me, and I can make, uh, sometimes Miss Norton catches things behind me that are a little late, but it's okay. Till like one is okay.
The third, three.
Um, Mr. 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 Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we could go to health, farm renovation.
Yes, sir.
That's in your packet, that is, um, I don't know, anyway, all I need on that is, um.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know, it was kind of totally nuts, not.
From the Commonwealth?
Yeah, from the Commonwealth, what they're, what they're doing is, uh, might look, we'll go and dig, I found mine, anyway, what they're doing is, they're, they, I mean, just, I, I'm just general sense from, uh, board, they want, they want to renovate this building, and we don't have time to look at it, but basically, what they're doing is, they wanna, and, and I know Jimmy and Amy, uh, Buddy had some conversation, are they gonna take a window out upstairs, and then, and change the door, and try to make another room, um, and they're using ARCA funds, but I gotta give them permission to do that, and they want, and I, we're somebody getting a bigger generator, but that was the problem too, we gonna get the bigger generator, they gonna get the bigger.
Well, the, the, the grant, if, if I can, the grant is, uh, is active, and FEMA called me this past week, they wanted, uh, more information, and I've given it to them, and they're evaluating a forty-five KW going in this building.
Oh, right.
Which will be, which will be enough to run a whole building.
Right.
Yeah, that's been in the works for like a year and a half, FEMA's slow with that.
I, I, I was really looking, looking at possibly, I was looking at possibly, you know, no time to s- suggest them to relocate, you know, where they relocate, but they, they, it's, it's, it's a good fit here for the health farm, you know, that people know. And I'll tell you, I call in sometimes, I miss it all day, that parking lot's full, this parking lot is full of people, it, it's, it becomes in waves, you know what I mean? But it's.
I get rain, it's falling.
But, but I do gotta, we do got some, uh, we do got some work in this basement, um.
I'm serious.
But, but, well, too much, it's raining.
This corner of the city.
Right, it is raining, I know.
That's money to crops out there.
No, I wouldn't watch that for my dad to create.
Well, y'all feel okay if us, if I go ahead and sign that?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, that's general services money, correct, that's not county money.
That's not county money, I was just, but they're actually there all the time. In fact, I, I asked them, did they do this basement while they're doing it, but I, you know, we know unless you ask, right?
I've learned a lot of things since January four.
All right, if we, if we go on down to the school funds carryover, um, if you would, just concentrate on these two sheets, so that's gonna be in your packet this, this, um, this Thursday, and let me back up too, let you know. It's the reason why things are so thin on your packet, you're trying to, if, if, the work session failed the same week as the board meeting, so I just want y'all to understand that. And when we made a change of not having on the same like school board meeting, that's changed everything, so, and I think it happens, I think, uh, Mr. Kelly looked it up, it happened multiple times this year or something, all right? But anyway, um, what I want you to look at is, if, if, so it's two, two things, and let's go and finish, knock one out real quick, two hundred and eighty-five is, if you look at this sheet here, two eighty, one eight fifty-eight, that is for AT and C, we obligated that money, said that we were gonna pay this. By the way, this is physically a twenty-three, you know, this is, we're backing up, trying to get the books right, from twenty-three.
We never paid for twenty-three.
All right, well, but, but hold up, this two eighty is this year, this does clean, okay, okay, so that is, is we paid for that, okay, we paid for twenty twenty-three, now, that nine hundred and thirty-four thousand five ninety-four, we did, that, that's, that's carryover money, so let me back up, so we can explain this, so, because this, and, and, and Andrew and I had our first fight in, in office. Because we says, it goes, it's this school money, it's, it's just about, anyway, listen, let's back up, let me just say it this way, in twenty twenty-three, we had to pay five million and some dollars, okay? I have witnessed, we paid the minimal that's required, we paid that five million and some, okay? State money comes in in June, and, and I also had Lo- Logan, um, uh, she looked at, she, she, we verified that.
Cause we done an account reconciliation, gone through the detail, and made sure every inch of this thing.
Well, and see, thi- this is what gets complicated, this is what gets complicated, Miss Norton, and that's why Morgan's numbers, thi- this is why it looks like we got twenty million dollars. Okay, but, but, but Bo, you brought that in, we don't have, like seventeen, that two point nine, that two point nine is showing in our account, is what it is. And that has to be, and, and it's not our money, it's state money. Right, that's right, so, so what I'm gonna ask y'all to do is vote on changing, carry, allow the, uh, the, and it has to be a vote before the county moves to it, I mean, it has to, board has to.
Money they didn't need to operate. Can we both put this in a Catholic room before?
You, you can't.
Or the school.
Hold up, hold up, hold up, good, good, good point, Mr. Collins, in twenty twenty-three, we can't, because we, this is, this is just rolling to twenty twenty-four, which we are in now. I would like to see that change, I would like to see that change, I would like us to figure a way, get with the school board and say, hey, we're not gonna allow you to carry it over, we're gonna let you put, we want you to put a cap, a capital improvement plan, but it's gonna take a MOU, a, a vote for understanding, because later on, number was, man, that's our money, you know.
What's to keep them from spending?
Well.
In the MOU, the MOU.
Right, but, but what happens, Miss Norton, once it goes, the money goes on their side defense, I call it, we don't have any control of, but if it's on our side defense, we, we got, we got control of. But, but remember, it's state money, it is state money, and it's obligated to the school, you know, so, so, I mean, because they got projects, they, they got, they got, they got, they, y'all saw that safety, they got handicap situations for the school. They, so, I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather them take money and put it in a capital lay improvement later on, like you're talking about, Mr. Collins. Instead of coming up and saying, I need eight million dollars, we don't do the one debt, we borrow money.
Well, here's my question, I'm like Bill, they made it without it, so, seriously.
They wanted it, I agree.
Well, well, some of it might be, but, all right, so, but, but look, but, but, so, so this is what, this is how Andrew and I got in our first fight, okay, you, you're, you're right here, okay, you're right here, all right. If, if, if we, if we, listen to me.
I'm ready to have this happen.
If, if we, if we were obligated, uh, it was, it was called a local max, it's a required. If, if we, if we were obligated, uh, it was, it was called a local match, it's a required local match. And we paid five million dollars. If we keep any of that money, then we ain't paying our local, our local match.
I'm saying that, but what I'm saying is, and this is what I, some of y'all maybe told, told you this, but I, somebody told me this, that what the county was doing was spending state money first, and holding local money back till the end.
That was a whole, that's fed, fed, state, then local.
Right. And so what we're trying to do next year, like, this, this, next those years, but we're going to next few years, we're gonna make pay, if we owe six, we owe six million dollars, we're paying five hundred thousand dollars a month, twelve months.
So if you talk.
Well, like eleven months, that's nothing.
Talk with the treasurer to get this, the transfer straight.
Which one? The, the one that we talked about now? Yeah, yeah, she, uh, she, she understands what we, we are in the situation we're in. And, and I've also, I've got the treasurer and Logan talking to each other. And Heather talking to each other, so I got people talking to each other.
So total left field, can those carryover funds from the state be put in a CD to collect money?
Some of them, some of them can be allowed, lottery money can, it's, it's, it's two different kind of funds that can, they got stipulation that you can.
You learn some stuff.
I, I am, man, but, but that because my brain is hurting, that's how I get.
Oh, is that why you did it?
Right, 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 right. But, but, but it's a process, y'all, we have got to take this money, I gotta get the books right in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Didn't someone tell you?
Right, right, Andrew and you, so, so we, so we gotta get, we gotta get the books right. So in your package, what, what now, let me tell you something now, there's people in the school board, and I, I, I'm not calling names either, because we don't, they disagree, they, they, they think, they, they've made it clear to me that the, the school has too much money. But my point of it is, right at this point, twenty twenty-three, we paid our local match required, it's not our money to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. You, you can figure it out all you want to, it's not our money, because we, I, I seen it, I seen when the transfer went over, our required in twenty twenty-three. Now, do we need to do something different at the end of this supposed to be, I think so, sir. I think we gotta figure it out, right, right. But I gotta get, now you gotta get school board group too.
All right, do we need to have a joint meeting with them and have something ready in case we need a public hearing and have something ready July one?
Do we need, and this is my, my question. Being a former school person for years and years and years, do we need to take that money back? You know what I'm saying? We need to start. We let them, we let them start.
Because then you didn't make the local match. If we, if we gave them seven million dollars, we only had to give them five.
No, I, I, so what I'm, that's not what I'm talking about, Bill. What I'm talking about is, do we, do we want to take back control of the school board's money?
I think we need to change the account for sure.
Actually, because we kind of, we went and buy the old board, and they said, okay, we'll let them, kind of paying their bills and everything. You know, and so now we're in a situation where they tell us they want more money, and we don't have any way to control it.
But we're also in the bind because we've expended all that, not having.
But, but some of the stuff is like, it, it, uh, like, I, I think, I think, if you say why they got so much, I think some of it is they got vacancies. I'm pretty sure that's, that's a lot, they got a lot of teaching vacancies.
They got.
And they've got a lot of.
That means they should go, spend it all over the next thirty days on.
And that's right, so that's why we need to form a relationship, why spend it on stuff you don't need.
Well, they got.
They got the best.
Well, they got a chairman, they got a chairman that was totally against that.
They know they've got brief expenses coming up, we all said that, even when they told all those things coming up. So put it in, put it away, invest it.
I, I don't see why they wouldn't be imposing it. We're not asking for us to spend it all off.
Right, right.
Or something aside for you, you didn't spend it because your staff was short, so you didn't have your salaries as you need. Here's your, here's your little pot of money.
Improve our, improve our student, our, our children's school.
Yeah.
This is for the.
And I'm gonna be curious.
Particularly with the ADA stuff, if that wasn't done because there was no money. You guys know what that stuff costs. You end up getting to the attorney, it's gonna give you, you're putting the ramps in, taking care of the door, whatever was needed. We had no money to fix that, but wouldn't be worried off.
But if this is gonna help our books, because we're gonna go to the finance, this is exactly why. That's why I kept you on twenty million dollars. That's two point nine, two two, nine hundred sixty-three, that actually is, Bo, that's what you were talking, and that, and that guy, they, I mean, they, they, they consider that, but where I disagree with them, they call it non-obligated money, that money is obligated. And that, that's what I disagree with.
I called it that one that night.
Yeah, that's disagree with, I'm disagree with anybody, that's obligated money. But anyway.
Well, when I caught a lot of grief because we grilled the all the time.
Yeah, I did, I caught the grief.
But we need.
They called it recently yesterday, said, I didn't know what I was talking about, the candidate got that money. I said, sure, candidate gets, I said, federal government does too.
But I wish we could figure out a way to work with them and really build up an account so they could pay off some of the stuff that they need to do. This really will go into the infrastructure.
Right.
And not just, I pay as.
Well, now, it's my understanding that the state sends them money for infrastructure every year, is that correct?
I think that's part of lottery money, I don't know what it's called, yeah, I, I.
I think they get it. Yes, and, and when I read about the new state budget that's been approved, they're putting a hell of, oh, excuse me. They got a lot more money. In education, from what I saw.
No, no, we have not, uh, we sent it, they did call. Oh, we did get a.
Yeah, they signed it, they signed it. So I mean, we can have a lot of money, I don't know how much we get.
It's called Mork, Senator Morka. No, no, she said, she said, she said, she says Morka.
Okay, I digress.
Good evening, Senator Morka asked me to send an update, and she spoke with Senate Finance, they said that the budget is already written, so they can't do anything immediately. However, they're going to diligently look for solutions and will contact Senator Morka once they have one. She asked me to pass along, so she can stay on it, we'll be in touch once she has additional information. And I asked her, around, around about five hundred thousand dollars, and I've also. And I also have contacted, um, I'll say it in public, no matter, I've contacted, um, Mr. Raj. I told Mr. Raj, if, if we can figure a way to stipend you pay or whatever we do, would you lobby for that, help us lobby for that half a million? He said absolutely, and he, he's good at it. That's right, anyway. So, anyway. But, but let's see, it sounds like they own it, they understand.
Yeah.
All right, all right, so that's in your packet, I'm.
You told, you told the way or two, huh?
Yeah, we, uh, we gotta look, we got something back in the way, but it was really vague, you know?
Always vague.
System is always vague.
All right, I don't think y'all.
Vegas, Vegas.
Okay, all right, so we're going on to the tax rate budget discussion. Ms. Norton, excuse me, to your point, you said something earlier about, you know, uh, when did this arise? I don't know if I've ever told you, I voted against the last two, but because questions couldn't be answered. And with this guy, that can add, multiply, subtract, and divide, and is the dumbest one in the room, and you can't answer my question.
That's right.
You talking about me?
No.
Oh, I didn't say about me.
No, I said I'm the dumbest.
Oh, oh, I'm just saying, because I take, I take.
No, but, uh, I, I appreciate everything that, uh, staff and you guys, Dickie, Bethany, and, um, uh, consultants have been doing and everything, it's been eye opening, and like we said before, everything was gonna be costly, it was gonna be ugly when it was exposed, and here it is, you know?
Okay, so we're gonna put this on the screen, this, 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 Kelly. All right. All right, we'll, and we'll just, we'll go through it briefly and.
Shouldn't you be able to see that?
Yes, yes. Right, and that's what we open to get done today. Okay, so this kind of just, this is, this, this is what, this discussion we're talking about to- tonight, um, this course, course is gonna be a lot of, a lot of future discussions as well. Um, next one, Andrea Wood. All right, this Code of Virginia, uh, basically tells you, um, if you have a general reass- assessment, you go, and it stays under that one percent, we're talking about, you see one of it, you, you go to, uh, section, subsection B, you go to next slide, and the main points is in the yellow, uh, the governor body of the county said, brother, which shall not be held at the same time as the annual budget hearing. So that's why we gotta have a special hearing, we gotta have a special hearing for reassessment, okay? All right? That just basically tells you, we'll, we'll sell the blanks, once we decide what we're gonna do to tax rate, that's what's gonna be in the pay. Okay, we fill in the blanks, all right? All right, reassessment implications, um, th- this right here, uh, shows you, uh, and go to the bottom, it says value of the penny twenty twenty-three, um, it was ninety-nine thousand, it's not a hundred and thirty thousand, like, I think Mr. Roach and I have been discussing before, we always say a hundred and thirty, it's really more conservative numbers, one twenty-five.
Yeah.
And that's another thing, I think one thing that I have been, uh, dealing with Mr. Quick on, um, and we really wanted to keep our revenue, um, with conservative numbers, so we won't be in the situation that we are, uh, been in, it, 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 it's one billion dollars, that, see the difference in, in the total taxable real estate, twenty twenty-three, uh, it went from one billion to one, one point three, um, total real estate revenue, uh, in twenty twenty-three was, uh, four point eight, um, twenty twenty-four real estate, at the thirty, if we go, if, if in other words, we stick it for forty-eight cent, you go down to point thirty-seven four cent, you're actually taking in a, a little less money.
Which is the difference in the reassessed value.
To three hundred million dollars. Three hundred million dollars more. Okay, that's amazing.
All right, go to the next.
What, what, Nicky?
If you look at taxable real estate, okay, in twenty-three, it's, it's a one point oh-two million, one point three million in twenty-four, that is.
Billion, billion.
That is billion.
Billion.
Right.
That's how much it went up and went up.
I'm talking about, yeah, one point three billion, three hundred million.
You know what, that's what Dickie said.
But if we, if we keep it at this rate here, if we lower it to this rate here, to offset the reassessment, we actually get a little bit less money. That money, this figure right here would be the exact same thing as this figure with the new reassess.
Exactly, I got you, I do what you're saying, all right? I think we go to the next one. Um, so, so here's the schedule, and that's, this is, and I, and, and, and I'm glad you said it, um, Mr. Collins, we're going to probably, we need to put this out actually on the website, and so people can see what, what, you know, what we up against, would, and I say we, because we're all in this thing together. Um, so tonight is when I, when I'm, in, in, basically what I gotta have y'all do is, on the board, it's on Thursday night, give me a tax rate to advertise, okay? I'm not saying we're, we're adopting it, you, you send something to advertise, so we can listen to the, you know, you gotta put in local, and then in May thirty, we actually have a public hearing work session, that's the end of this month, a legal advertisement, local newspapers, that's, that's, that's the budget, that's actually budget and other tax rates. So we still got personal property, which we, we, we have, we're not gonna look at those numbers too deep tonight, but personal property, if you go back up to the three seventy-five, three sixty-five, um, you'll, you'll back like you were before, because all that's changed.
Are you looking at me?
Because you want to make, you know, I wouldn't lie to you.
And that's pulling the COVID relief off. You're talking about personal property. Prior boards.
Yes, yeah, that's right, that, that, that.
At the time, if the vehicles, used vehicles.
The tax relief, the, the one million dollars tax relief.
They gave the citizens some relief.
Right, that's right, okay, all right. That, that, so, so keep that package so you can put it in your clock, just make sure you put that on your schedule, and not, and I don't think anything's on the list, right?
All right, so let, I just want to be clear about something.
Okay.
Legal advertisement goes out on the forty-second. I just wanna make sure we got two, we got fourteen full days in between that first advertisement.
And, 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 and Mr. Mr. Chairman, really, I'm gonna get you this tax rate first, we gotta, that's how I'm balancing the budget.
You wanna say the number?
You see what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
We ain't got that yet. I know, Mr..
Cause I'm getting ready.
Back up, I'm ready to go, all right. I go to the next one. Andrew, we gotta move, we gotta, we gotta keep them thinking fast, um, they start thinking too much, it give me trouble. Um, so which, that's the thing, we face tremendous, uh, and we don't need to get too deep with that, administrators tend to work in details, so May thirty work session, final tax rate public hearing, so we gotta, we gotta get back together after we hit a public, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
All right, so keep on moving. All right, so here's a decrease in revenue from twenty-four to twenty-five, this is what we, we, uh, we do, we do know. Um, uh, and this is preliminary budget overview, so you look at, you, you look at the local sales tax was under three hundred and fifty-five, the personal property tax, it was underestimated, it was overestimated, it was overestimated, okay? Building permit was in the red forty thousand, projected landfill shortfall forty thousand, so.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, excuse me, the total decreased revenue, one point six, I don't say one point seven, say it in, in your head, because you will see one point seven in a minute, okay?
All right, you're saying all of that was overestimated.
That's right, and, and, and that, that one point seven is in the, we, we, we went in the red before we spent money.
That's right.
You hear what I'm saying, you were in the red before you, so spending is not, was the problem, is that it won't coming in. And notice what he, he put it, the, um, and, and Morgan Quick was very clear on this, it's important to note, there's no money missing, it's not missing, nobody.
It was just not allocated.
Not allocated, right, that's right, um, okay.
Not collect.
All right, and it's.
And was then spent out of the general fund.
Right, and, and we're not gonna get a lot of details about how we're gonna try to recruit some more money, we're gonna use something like Mr. Norton was talking about, it was, uh, increase, we're not gonna get into that tonight, we just, we, we need to get.
We need to move along.
Okay, all right, next. All right, increased expenses, okay, the correction, the, uh, the detention center went up eight hundred nineteen thousand. The Virginia retirement, uh, if you look at the bottom of VRIS, it went from two point four, one percent to six point six seven percent, which is a total two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The tech center, uh, in this, that, that went up to six hundred and forty-three thousand, um, which was, and then the health insurance other costs went up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the, you know, and I've talked, and I talked, I talked to, um, I talked to, I met with Heather and Ms. Grimes, Dr. Grimes, last Friday, and I'm great concerned that the media's gonna fly one day, and what are we gonna do? You know?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay them for their part.
And it's, and it's, then it's, then it's, then it's, it's high, it's, it's high real estate.
Why did it spend so much? Especially with the tech center and the correction.
Correctional center, they had that escaped and lost the, the, uh.
They lost all the federal money. And then, and then used.
Big part of that is, is the per diem, that's, it's about two and a half times of what it was, and that's a function of inflation.
And that's.
Think about what your groceries pay from the.
But just, just like what Colin's saying, if we, if I can get five hundred thousand dollars back from DCBR, that's not what I pay. You see what I'm saying, that, that, that makes a big difference.
Right.
That, 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 then we only three hundred and nineteen thousand, but if we are, we need to get that money back, recruit it back. Uh, but, but, all right, move on, so anyway, um, all right, total decrease, uh, that, uh, in revenue was one point six, uh, totally increases, uh, totally increased expenses with one, uh, one point eight, so basically, you've got a deficit of three point five, three point five before you can do the budget. Okay, that's, that's a clear.
You got two spankings right there.
I saved this for last.
They ain't spanking me.
All right, so the top, the top is, is really what was, uh, overestimated in twenty-three, twenty-four plus.
That's right.
You had a, you had double count?
Yes.
On to car.
Personal private.
That's right, one point one million or something like that. And, and then your expen- your expenses, they, they, they under, un- 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 unestimated spend is an overestimated.
Got you, that's. Steve, I got one question for you. Is it, is it assumed, or is it a fact? Did we overspend on legal fees?
Yeah, we've always spent on legal fees, that's a fact.
All right, is there anything we're doing to correct that?
All right, so you're starting off with, with you, we don't, we have meetings with Adam, and then, um, Mr. Collins helped me connect to Mr. Elder, we're doing, utilizing, uh, him as much as we can, but we, we're still wrapped up in a lot of, and, and then let me say this, um, let me say this too, I know people, you know, you might have stuff, San Anderson has been a good partner of us, I mean, they respond pretty quick, real quick, and they have goodness, have helped us with some situations.
Right.
But, and, and I, and I found out in this lawyer thing, everybody specializes in something.
Sure.
Right, and it's better sometimes to, I don't know, you need a, 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 a lawyer.
Traditional or one that specializes in it.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, but, 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 but we are, you know, we, and just like tonight, I heard, you know, Tommy referred to Mr. Elder. So we're doing everything, but lawsuits, Mr. Roach.
I wanna adjust, I wanna adjust the lawsuits, any lawsuits going forward, I think as a board, me particular, we say that you need to consult with our liability insurance company, let them provide the legal counsel. You can't check, change legal counsel in the midst of a lawsuit, it makes you look bad. But going forward, that's the reason we got insurance, if I got farm, you're in state farm, and I get in a car wreck, they have legal counsel gonna defend me.
Right.
We're paying the premiums for that, there's no need to use the county money to do that.
And, and we, and we have met with insurance, we, I've met with some, Susan bought the insurance company in, and one of the things that she recommended to me was a couple things to get the insurance down, and, and one of them was to put the cattle guard in front of the vehicles, because we know that so many wrecks. was a couple things to get the insurance done, and, and one of them was to put the cattle guard in front of the vehicles, because we know that so many wrecks uh, with deer, and actually, uh, Ms. Graham has got.
Cattle guard in front of the deer.
Yeah, you know, but. I told cattle guard, but. Right, I, but anyway, um, that, that, we have so many deer, our insurance is going boom, and the other thing she recommended, she, she recommended find a lawyer to, to alert form chief in the San Anderson. They will pay so much, they will pay so much, but they won't pay that premium, so.
I think we wanna recover like roughly forty percent from lawsuits.
That's right, and, and let me say this, yeah.
You're talking about for the legal counsel?
Yes.
Right. So, but if they got a cap that they'll pay up to, and you got somebody that's gonna do it for sixty percent less and do it as good as God, then it won't cost anything, or they still will get only forty percent, or they're only gonna pay forty percent.
That is a question for someone other than me.
Like you said. But, but anyway, but, and, 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 and just to make sure, we make sure clear, every, um, right now, and especially with this board and previous board too, everything we're doing is, is defense, is, we're not, is, is protecting ourselves.
You know, we tell me that animal shelter, we, this number right here, they pay the architect two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and they won't even gonna build that.
Well, they were planning on building it.
It ain't good enough for me.
I understand.
I plan on hitting a lot of it, but I gotta get that number right. And I gotta play.
You gotta remember, that was five years ago.
Somebody coming to stay here.
We can't take up these past decisions, like.
Why you bringing the whole?
We messed up a lot, we messed up, we spent a lot of money that we shouldn't spend.
I'll speak to a couple of things, part of the learning is, and we've all spent the last six months finding places money was going that it shouldn't have.
Mm-hmm.
Two fifty.
We're identifying.
Two fifty, four hundred and six, so we, you know, we've identified a landfill that's a problem, we've identified the regional jail took another six hundred thousand.
And the L R A.
The L R A got two hundred fifty from the general fund, I believe, last year.
Right, right.
And so it wasn't even paying for itself, so let the citizens just understand, we're finding it, and we'll fix it as we go, and that's just part of.
That's the plan. It's gonna take a, it's gonna take a couple of years.
If somebody, if somebody was to give us three million five hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, it would only get us done for now. It'd be zero.
Yeah.
But next year, you still gotta have the tax rate.
Exactly.
Reflecting expenses.
Because next year, you got a whole new deal.
Well, what bothers me, and we can't help but act, and put us in this position, tonight is the first time I've seen that number.
It ain't for me.
And I'm on the finance committee.
Is the first time you've seen it?
I've seen the deficit.
If, if, you gonna see some, you gonna see some.
I'm, we've heard, but that's the first time I've seen that deficit number.
Oh, you one of those visual people, you gotta see it.
Whoa, what I mean.
No, this isn't funny, y'all.
No, 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 that's.
Listen to me, let me finish, because y'all always talk around me. We have not reconciled since last June, July, we have not had a detailed budget report from the bank for it, we have not got.
We still ain't get it from the card.
We still not get, but we don't have financial. The treasurer can't give you a detailed report, because her end of it is only her end, the other end, you gotta work together, we're working forward to identify, so this doesn't happen again, but we have gone over a year, it was a past board too, that we didn't know where we were, and you know it, and you know, and you know it, we have begged for it and have not gotten. So this is no surprise we're in debt, but that is the first time I've seen that number.
So, but Mr. Norton, when we, when we individually went up to meet with the consultant.
That's right.
You would not show this number?
No.
Then you won't show the same thing everybody else?
Yeah, but yes, yes, amen.
The number was there. The number was different then.
You, that's, that's that word, that's that pass, that was that draft, that was that draft we passed that to, this was, it was a draft.
Yeah.
Cause we're trying to get that.
Okay.
All right, okay.
That was in there.
Yeah, uh, uh, it's, you, everybody got the stack same time, everybody got the same.
Right. See, I keep hearing.
But that was a draft, that was a draft, because we still, I mean, that was two or three weeks ago, and we still working sixteen hours a day, trying to figure this thing out, I'm telling you, right, and we get it tomorrow, but like Zach.
But we, and we are working together.
Right.
Going forward to fix this, but then we owe the citizens of this county better than that.
Well, the, the purpose of, well, the reason why I call them one-to-ones, whatever they had one-to-ones, I didn't want you to be shell shocked, and I'm sorry that didn't, so, we didn't maybe un-explain it right to that, but anyway, but there, that, 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 that is, but that's a conservative deficit too, guys, so always remember that, everything, you, you, you know.
Conservative to.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, every time, every, no, no, that didn't come out right, but, but understand, we're trying to turn the ship around.
Hopefully it's better.
That's right, hopefully it's better than that. Yeah, okay, all right.
So, all right, so here's the other thing, uh, that she was talking about, how come the treasurer, when it was a finance director, hasn't reconciled?
Because the finance director wasn't giving her the information she needed to be able to reconcile.
Well, the treasurer ain't come to us, but nothing.
She should, she should probably do that.
That's what I'm saying, that, that.
She should, I, I, when I put, so I, when I, what, what, I like to say is, when I walked in, we, we had some, um, we had some H R issues.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I like to say that.
So, so show me how you gonna fix all that. I'd also like to hear that the treasurer has finally decided to earn as much interest as available.
All right, that's, that, so that's, that's, we have the finance committee who is meeting Wednesday, which I'm, I put, and I'm.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, a meeting at three thirty, and it's two subjects, talking about carryover money, and having heard that she needs, because it never, I don't, I don't think it's felt, but our treasurer needs the support of this board to say, it's okay to touch that one point.
They've already told her that, I sent you the email, you asked me to send her an email, and I did, that she should invest this money. And what's happened prior to this person, all the treasures before, were told point-blank they could only invest locally. And so now she knows.
I'm sorry.
Locally, now she knows that they can go to other places, that's trying to describe it, she doesn't need that blessing.
Well, there are some.
They need to do it, she need to do it, that's right.
But, but I mean, I know what you're saying now, and I hear you, but I have no authority over the treasure, we, this board has no authority over the treasure, that's constitutional office.
Nobody's got authority over that money, she's the treasurer, take care of it. I'd like the citizens to get in touch with their treasurer, to tell them to earn the best rate she can, every citizen in this county call your treasurer.
We do believe, we do believe we missed somewhere in the neighborhood a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars in interest.
But that wasn't just this year, this was right.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just giving you a number.
The industry environment's changed.
I think you love that.
I know, but every treasure we ever had, that, that's what we said, we missed.
But still, the treasurer at the end of the month has some numbers, I want that report. I don't care if it's off or not.
She's gonna track me with reports, she doesn't have expenditures.
Well, we can compare that to the revenue that was projected, we would have caught that problem.
Is a total report what showed both sides in a balance sheet, everything.
Okay, all right.
I agree with the balance sheet in both sides, but we need to see hers and put it against, like you said, to be able to project many expenses. Cause we would have seen, we would have said, hey, wait a second.
Yeah, that's right.
For sure.
That's exactly right. So how we gonna fix it?
All right, so, um, just, just some numbers here, uh, has been getting very, so preliminary figures, one point seven of cuts. In other words, all the additional funding that departments ask, recommend, don't do it. Um, if you do, if you don't do it, you, you can save one in some inner neighbor one point seven, um, gotta make, it's a tough decision. If you got the cost of three percent raises, that's two hundred thirty thousand dollars there, the savings if you don't do it. Um, now, we can't, but our school does include raises, and it's not the rule we can do about that, and that, that's the political part. Some people will get raises, other people won't get raised, okay, all right?
You said it saved us one point seven.
It's cost, the, 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 the raises is two hundred thirty thousand.
Right, but I'm talking about the, the budget request.
Yeah, some of the budget requests.
You're trying to get your expense back down to where your revenues, so your revenue.
Right.
Right, so what my statement wanted to be was, it's not necessarily saving us anything, because we don't have it to spend to start with. Other words, what I'm saying is, that number's not gonna come off of that three million dollars, that three, that's not gonna subtract. That three million is already gone. It's already gone, that's what I wanna clarify.
Yeah, 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 okay, no, we're not trying to balance it.
Right, that's what I wanted to clarify for the budget. That one point seven, Bo, is saving your citizens about fifteen cents. Right, exactly, that's what I wanna clarify for the budget.
All right, um, go to the next one, just gotta give you, okay, we're getting close, all right, so, based on the estimate, the deficit the county is facing, that the real estate rate here it is to advertise a public forty, forty-five, if, if you, if you do a hearing and do forty-five cent a hundred, um, that is an increase of point zero seven percent. You, you see what, you, you, in other words, let's say.
I, we know.
You know what, the increased real estate value is increased with reduced nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, so, so going to forty, if you advertise forty-five cent and you adopt that, you done brought in nine hundred fifty.
Increase their taxes by twenty-five percent, bro. The average person, we have increased the taxes by twenty-five percent.
But.
There's many people in this county cannot afford with the new reassessment, to pay twenty-five percent more in real estate taxes than what they were paying. A person paying, just easy figure, a thousand, is gonna pay twelve fifty. Generally, that would never went up over thousands, it wouldn't have went up but set seventy bucks, they'd have paid a thousand seventy, we, I don't know how we fix it, Bo, but it ain't going to jack this up to, to, uh, it's essentially jacking it up, you're trying to catch a shortfall with the reassessment, but it's going up twenty-five percent.
All right, we'll go back to that one, let's go.
In year one, in year one.
Year one.
What happens next year.
Exactly, so, so go to the next slide, we'll go back, we'll go back. All right, um, so other sources to close the gap, um, that's the, uh, uh, you, you know, even considering the increased revenue, you know, it, what's, what, what does that say, there's several proposed revenue changes to set up, um, the main that you could close gap another one million to one point three million, I, I guess that's still about the real estate tax, you, you with me?
That's going, that's reducing your capital balance, your general fund, taking it out of the bank.
Okay, so that means remaining deficit, you would take out one point two to one point five out of the county's unassigned fund balance, reserve.
Do you wanna take it out of the, the unassigned fund, what, show me the unassigned fund now, where, where do we have money that's unassigned? We don't.
But, okay, yeah, we, yeah, we go, go, yeah, we go, next one. Okay, that's one, so, so we always says, that's the deficit, okay, do you read, you, yeah, we went backwards.
But I remember that, that, did we not supposed to have fifteen percent, is that what you call an unsigned?
We supposed to have fifteen.
We supposed to have, we supposed to have. How much? Eight to ten is, is low, twelve is perfect. All right, so the audit fund balance shows you twenty million dollars, but that's what you were talking about, the true estimated fund balance is sixteen million, all right, the land, the, the obligated funds is eight million dollars for the landfill. All right, I have gotten just the call, if you, if you go to this, uh, what do you call it, John did, uh?
Tiffin station.
The Tiffin stations, whatever, they didn't gave me an estimate of three million dollars, so if you decide to do that, that means your eight million for closing landfill is three million, you're obligated.
To eleven, make it eleven million.
Right, to make eleven million.
Now, what did the landfill take out of the general fund this year?
Four hundred thousand.
That's four thousand a year, so that's the savings, if we can get away from the landfill as good as Tiffin's, that gives us some of our income back.
Right, so.
There's basically in two years, you're gonna save two million dollars, I mean, five years, you're gonna save two million dollars.
So here's, here's the thing, so we, we.
That's right.
Like, like you were talking about, we still, we still think we will be a shortfall, you know, so you still think you can have a shortfall of about two point five. And then, so that, that, that would project your lump balance is two point five million dollars, and then you, and then you, you, you can pull one and a half million out of your general fund, so basically you end up one million dollars of funds that's not assigned. Go to the next one, we'll, we'll go back, we can go back and talk about it. Audits recommend, okay, this is what, this is what the audits recommend, fifteen, twenty percent, fifteen percent is seven point two, twenty-six down, the, the only saving grace is the L R A money. Five to, five point two million puts us right there at the, and I think it's on the next one. See that, when considering the true projected fund balance of, L R A funds, five point two could be evaluated, actual unassigned bond, which is seven point seven, and that puts you in that twelve percent you were talking about, you know, um, let's keep counting above the fifteen percent number, anyway, that's, that's bring the physical unassigned fund balance, if you use that money, then you got unassigned fund balance of six point two. All right, we got one more slide, and that's it, summary, um, upcoming budget is very challenged, difficult, I think y'all figured that out. Um, use of unassigned fund is not recommended, but, you know, you, you, that's what you may have to do, the county would need to work over the budget off-season, develop a long-term strategic plan. This ain't gonna be one budget season, so we gotta go through to see what we can do next, and how we can figure out to, to save money, and fortunately, the county does have a reserve to be offset this period of time, so. If, if you, like, you go back to that one slide, and you go to forty-five cent, then we still have problems, so, but if you do forty-five cent, I'm saying advertise, you, advertise, you go down.
And, 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 you are still increasing it twenty-five percent, twenty-three to twenty-five percent, give me your math on that, Bo. So it was four million, we was already getting, just rough picking off the top of my head, we was already getting four million, say four point, let's try to get somewhere, four point five million or whatever it is, and it's going, it's going to increase us by nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, so roughly, that's about twenty-three percent. One of, one of the things that I, I didn't like in, you, Christie Hudson did, did provide it for me, I've got it, I don't have it with me. Dickie England's property went up ninety-some percent?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine percent, mine went up twenty-three percent.
Mine went up thirty-nine percent.
Went up thirty-nine percent, so what you're saying, Bo, is affecting individual these, individual people differently.
Oh, yeah.
If you can, you can take your broad brush and say, well, the money's going, the dollars are going from this to that, the county's gonna spend. If his, if his went up ninety-nine percent, if his place was valued at a million, over a hundred five eighty, so that's a million nine, a hundred, a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. If you was paying forty-eight hundred dollars on it, you're now gonna be increased by about twenty-three percent. If you, yeah, well, no, it's twenty-three, yeah, that's exactly right. So yours was what I'm not, no, it can't be doubled, not if you reassess, not if you, if you bring it right then, it can't be doubled, it can't be doubled. Like, if, if he stayed at forty-eight, you'd double, cause you're a man, you'd double, so he backed it down.
Backed it down.
But you're, but you're like a seventy percenting, not twenty-five percent. Right, I'm talking about the, the budget, twenty-five percent, it roughly is going, yeah, it's gonna affect him. If we kept the rate the same at forty-eight, and his doubling value, his real estate taxes double.
That's right.
Anything from. And then when you reduce it, if it comes out to twenty-five percent, when you look at forty-eight, it'd be twelve hundred dollars, so you'd now be paying six thousand dollars.
We were talking about the exact same thing you made of, and prior decisions kept us low rate, but yeah, everybody liked it, because they didn't have to pay a lot of taxes, but we can't provide the services we have to provide for the citizens keeping it up. I had a town hall meeting the other night, eleven people, and everyone, I realized the taxes are gonna go up, they know it. They don't like it, but they all, all love it, I'm saying, I realize they have what we need to have, my taxes.
Yeah, we do provide a public service, I agree with that, but if you look at it from a standpoint of someone who is on a fixed income, and the reassessment, the problem is it didn't go up before, like it should.
That's right, we should have reassessed it.
But then we can't go there and, and get them right now, we can prick them with the needle, but we can't cut the.
And that's not that when you change knee, but we vote that four years.
And, and two, I feel for these senior citizens, because I've heard it before. So you and me, okay, we just worked a little harder, and we get five hundred dollars more of our taxes, five hundred dollars to a senior citizen on medicine means they're not gonna buy, buy their medicine for a couple of months, that's what's.
Potentially, potentially, you're right, that's why I said you can't do that.
It's hard, but we got put in this position.
You know, my prediction was, before ever knowing any of these numbers right here, during reassessment time, when people called me and said, my place went up fifty percent, so I said, we're going to, as a board, adjusted rate, but your taxes, you will pay a few more dollars, but my estimate is you pay no more than like seven to nine percent more.
You didn't know what you know now.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Bo, and it's okay to change your mind due to the facts that are in front of you.
Oh, absolutely, you got to.
A lot of people wanna hold, hold us accountable for what we say, as they should, but we're only speaking to them when they ask, and we're only answering with the information that we have.
If my predict, and when I tell you what, I didn't pull that number out of my butt, that seven percent, he, he, the consultant put in here third, which is the actual number, by the new reassessed value, we would have to, I'm on page three. It would, it would have to go down to thirty-seven point four from forty-eight. All right, so I said, well, if you go up seven, you, you add seven percent, not seven cent to the rate here. If you pay a thousand dollars a month, you pay a thousand seventy, my estimate. That's increasing the county's, uh, revenue by seven percent in the kind of way you look at. And by doing it this way is increasing the county's, of course, our expenses increased, is increasing the county's revenue by twenty-three percent in the way you look at. So, instead of seven percent or even ten percent or even fifteen percent, we're gonna jack them up to about twenty-three. And I know it can't, we provide public services and what else do we do, but we can't expect people, we can't expect people to pay that. Let me ask you this. Think about, y'all, you guys think about this one minute. You got a real estate investor in the county, and several of them, that has rental property. And he's not one up, say, say the man's got ten, fifteen, twenty, or five, or one. He's not one up on his rental rate because this person has been there for five years. They've never been laid on their rent and they own a fixed income. But that house went up in value from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the rate didn't change. You think that landlord is gonna go in and hold on his rent? No. He's going to Mary Jane and said, Ms. Jane, you were paying eight hundred, you got to pay nine fifty. She said, I ain't got no place to stay. How long can you give me before I move back? That's my situation and it ain't five or ten rental houses, a whole lot more than that. And that's, and it's a lot of people's situation. They cannot do it.
I know a lady, you know, I talked to you about, she sold her house, she had a month, of course, she got the new house. She looked and called sixteen real estate companies in Ottawa County, couldn't find that one place. And the two she found were thirteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month.
They just can't explain.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Gordon and, uh, Mr. Toad, where are y'all at then with the, uh, with the schedule that was presented?
I'd have to dig some numbers up. I had a sheet bill and I think you did too, and I think everybody did. It, it was, it, the increase, which we said was about a hundred and twenty-five billion per, uh,
Per penny, yeah.
Per penny. But you got the sheet bill by chance?
A hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
This is, well, I sent you this the other day.
No, no, I mean, I thought that we got over that that day.
We got the same one. I didn't break it.
Oh, I didn't break mine either.
This, this mic, help you. That's a picture he sent me. So, to actually be whole, I believe the county would have to not stay at forty-eight.
Have to go up? Go according to that?
That's right. Go to fifty-seven. And then when I, we're looking at debt at some point to get this emergency service radio.
Yeah, I gotta do, we gotta do, we're gonna have to do a loan.
So, you're gonna look at some debt service too. So, it was something that Mr. Bowen said to me about the tax rate and the fact that Ottawa County's always paid tax, never borrowed money.
Right.
Your tax rate wasn't quite right to provide the projects that your citizens, citizens require. Because there are longer term projects that you wanna borrow for, but we never had any debt service room on our pennies, on our, on our tax rate. You know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in debt service to go borrow, you know, money for a fire station, go borrow money for, to help the school, borrow money for the radio. And so that, I had not thought about that, you know. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a very debt adverse person. But planning and making sure that you can provide for your citizens takes a little bit of debt. So, this is just the first step. We gotta figure out how to get there. We're working for some project money on the L R A. People know that the bowling alley is now available. I think we've already had a phone caller too, and that, contract on that the last time was more than nine hundred. And so that's some project money. That can, that can, we don't get on this radio, so we don't have to borrow as much. With things like that, don't fix your budget with the tax rate.
And what we need to do is stop rubber stamping this consent calendar. We need to start watching our expenses coming in. And hopefully, Mr. Bowen's in this round, we're gonna get all covered up of our issues and we're gonna be able to get some sort of financial balance sheet.
And, 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 now, the, yeah, she, I thought he said that in front of the, in front of y'all in each, we had our one-to-ones. And I'm, I'm pretty sure he did. We don't have, we, we, we're not, we're not big spenders, y'all. We're not, our expenses is not.
It's not the county, it's the schools.
Well, it's, it's not, I mean, our expenses is not, it's mostly just labor.
But we've had several things come on us at once now that's not even figured in yet, like he was talking about the communication. But if you think about it, like, I can't help but to think Brunswick County, using them for example, their rate is like fifty-seven. But your real estate ain't worth as much. What makes the stock market go up? People buy stock. What makes it go down? People sell stock. A option in a put, people gotta take a different position. So, my point is, your forty-eight cent that, that, that Ottawa's kept all this time may have bought some extra added interest in the cap, may have made them buy some homes, some farms, some raw land. If it was fifty-seven percent, maybe they wouldn't have bought it. Maybe, maybe they was dealing with the budget. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna tell you this. I, I talked to a real estate agent the other day. Came in the bank and I started talking with him. He was telling me about what people are paying for land in this county. It's amazing.
It's amazing.
It's amazing.
All of the rural counties.
Yeah, he told me, guy, he had sold, I think it was twenty-eight acres. The guy cut the timber off of it, who bought it, cut the timber off of it and flipped it for like three times as much as he paid for it. And that's cut over land.
Right.
So, I mean, you're looking at people about.
Forty-five, hundred, forty-five hundred dollars for cut over land.
Yeah.
And we've got to do a better job of marketing ourselves. We have been marketing ourselves.
Or they need to.
I just want y'all to know that, so, Mr. Quick and myself, we, we had multiple long conversations.
He told me to consult.
To consult, right. And, and it's, he said it's okay to say his name. He said, okay. So, um, just look, look what it says up there. Recommended real estate tax rate to advertise.
Right, it ain't say adopt.
It didn't say adopt. I say advertise. And that's what I need the green light to advertise. Didn't listen to the public. And if you go down, you go down, but just, just note, every time you go.
So, if you advertise that, you, you won't go over that.
But you can't go over.
You can't go over. So, you advertise it, you advertise. If you go, if you go a penny or less, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this, and then that means it's, it's sort of nine hundred and fifty, you subtract, you, it's just the weight of mass.
And here's the other thing I.
You start, when you sell a cow, you start high or low?
Say again.
I didn't hear. When you're selling something, you start high or low?
Oh, you always thought, you always thought high. I've said you can come down, but you can't go up, boy, there'll be no gun.
So, what is the.
But you can also run people off.
Well, that's, that's why he said, if you saw the last of summer, we gotta have more meetings, y'all, during the year. We can't do budget in April. We can't do the budget, man. We gotta have that, we gotta have meetings and talk and, and, and then you, if, if we, if we sold them out, this is your million dollars. You're like, you can, all right, Steve, this is what I think we need to do, blah, 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 blah. Okay, all right, let's take the million, do this. Well, we gotta, we gotta be smart.
You can't, you can't, you can't, this is what that means asking. You can't take a penny, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and continue to ask the citizens to do that whenever you've got to expect. Uh, one of the things we're, we're looking at is rezoning out there at the L R A, get that.
Right.
Land industrial, that has not been marketed. I learned that with a citizen the other day. There's a, there's a government, a Virginia State website that lists all the industrial land that's available and it's owned by the county. Know who's, whose lands not on there? Not the county.
Well, that's why, that's why Mr. Zodi.
That's why we're not marketing to our potential.
So, we're not, we're not marketing, we're not zoning correctly. We're fixing all those things. More businesses that you bring in helps your citizens, so your taxes look. That's, that's, needs to be the long term goal.
I agree.
And that, you know, I would say it's a terrible word.
I hear it. It's five letter word, not a five letter word.
Nope.
You got data centers they talk about, they do. Good, good tax record, good taxes. Love to have some old timber, timber guys, get us another mill, get us a, um, oh, you know, hey, we got, we got the wood, we get some of your timber.
Yeah, but look how long it takes to grow back, you know, my tethered all the way, what we got?
No, you just keep on cutting and then they bring wood, but we're talking about businesses. Not just talking about the, not away, yes. The county owns some timber, we're gonna cut some timber. But again, that's one-time money.
Not fiction, it's accurate.
That helps us with our projects that we're trying to provide to our citizens. So, that one-time money.
If you have, if you have less debt, we sell some timber, we get this, then we can borrow four million dollars.
Thank you. So, while that's going on, we focus on marketing ourselves and changing our ordinances and things so we can get revenue from industry and.
I'd like to see you publish that forty-five cent, just to hear from the public exactly what you mean.
Well, who else you gonna have a hearing?
When I was on the board at my hearing at Soul Power, and I said, I wanna ask y'all something.
No, I didn't say it.
I did. I said, I said, and Dick goes in, I said, yo, are, are you telling me you okay be raising your taxes instead of soul? Everyone in there said, raise your taxes. I'll never forget it as long as I live. And I said, okay.
I would be damned if I sacrificed our citizens for easy money, so.
Well, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say I'd be though if I've become a communist individual to tell one what he can and can't do with it. Because I happen to be a pride land owner, and I don't want this county or no other county telling me what I can do with it. Because I bought it, cause I made it.
But they do, Bo.
If I own it, you damn it.
We just sit here tonight and talk about telling somebody you gotta tear your house down.
Yeah, that same thing. But you know, that's a disaster.
But the thing is.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
That's why you got to go.
It's the environmental impact of all that.
What is environmental impact? Ain't been no study showing to me.
That's right. They can't do it here.
I think they said it's gonna be all right, sweep by and back.
So, let me, let me, let me talk about something else for a minute. Y'all know how I feel about that. This L R A situation. I said something to Steve and I know John heard the same thing I heard. That, uh, that Pickett Park was estimated to be worth over four million dollars.
That's an old estimate.
Well, I mean.
No, it ain't old.
Not, not.
Yeah, so I mean, so we're sitting here. Go to the Colonel and say, hey, this is what we've been told this is worth. You want this land?
Father's in our court on that. We gotta figure that. I gotta.
And that, that was given to you. That was given to the county. It was given to the county.
That's what I'm saying.
Given to the county, we'd have been busted a long time ago.
It, it was, it was, wait, wait, I, I don't like the way you just said it. It was given back to the county.
That's right.
Was it ever taken from the county? No, it wanted to take it from the father, the father.
But they, but they were counted, but they were bought in the camp.
They were what?
They were bought in our camp.
You better believe it, but I just, I was like, it was Brunswick, it was Dingwood, it was all in the camp.
It was taken from the tax things. That's what they're talking about.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know what he's saying, but I, but it's in nineteen forty-two, the father was.
That four million dollars is accurate. That's a one-time event.
I agree.
Doesn't fix the debt.
No, no, no.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about, you got a situation where you're looking at that, you say we're three million dollars down?
Yep, if you did that, we, uh.
But then next year would be, it's still gonna be the same place.
But we'd be looking.
Right now, right? Sometimes you got a rock, beat a fake, well, I know all your way.
Well, the whole, the whole point is, you're looking at a situation where we've got this asset sitting there.
That's right.
And we got the bowling alley, we've got that asset sitting here that could be of use to the citizens of this county if we get the money for it.
I agree.
I agree. Yeah, we got, we got, you're, and I'm glad Mr. Eagle brought that up. We gotta, we have really got to figure out what is that asset? And, and I, the last thing I said, the last I sent to, back to the Colonel is, is basically the, the email was pretty much, and I don't know if I need to get too deep right now, but anyway.
No, let's not, let's, yeah, let's not.
All right, let's, I do have one thing here, guys, is, let's figure out, since we are in a work session, whether you think about it, you wanna do it, set a timeframe in there. Let's figure out a timeframe to, first of all, get that L R A switched over to light industrial. Public hearing, whatever we need to do, that's the side of time frame. Do we want that done by the end of the year? Let's get it done.
It's gonna be done by the end of the summer.
There you go. Let's pick that timeframe.
Cause he's got, you gotta do some, there's public hearings, just like anything, we have to, we have to public.
That's right.
Or reason.
That's right.
So, Greg, you know, needs to be working on that.
I need to, I need to do, I call them, I call it a grocery list and print it out and let y'all see and tell me what I'm missing. And call it, let's call it goals. We, we got budget, but we also got goals of twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-five.
And see, now that you've got this, and that, that's the whole thing, and, and I think the board has been very, very understanding of what we were looking at going into the budget. And there's still gonna be some numbers that change, but what, now that we have that schedule, it's, 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 we know this board wants to move. It's not like we're gonna say, okay, man, the budget's a tough, let's kick back for next six months. No. We wanna have the grocery list to keep moving, like you're talking about for those goals. And what are these things, it's there to focus on that industrial.
And, 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 and one thing I don't really, I don't really agree with, I just, I mean, I got, we, we lost, this guy Eric, he quit the company um, for the, for the landfill, you know, earning, for the discussion. And it's, and saying it's three million dollars there to do that. I don't know if that's right or not, but that's what he sent me the email.
I can't imagine.
So, so that, so that, so those, those, we might have to, to be right now. You see what I'm talking about? I don't, I don't know.
Get your, get your grading done, get a pad out there.
You put a concrete, put a nice steel building up there, cause you're gonna try one.
Why do you require a steel building?
You gotta cover it up, cause it's got, got a working rain loading trash truck. But that ain't cost much. That don't cost much.
Just that mechanism.
Yeah, but if you go pour a concrete platform up to it, you almost want a, a nice steel building. You know what I'm saying?
Hey, that, that, I'd be in a hard pit, too, to come up with.
No, but just the fact that that thing's bleeding four hundred thousand dollars.
That's right now, that's a, that's. And wait till you get into the sale development, two point five million dollars for a sale. You gotta do that, that year.
You, you know, that rain, yeah, so we done, we done emptied that thing. I'm, I hear that rain, all that rain is back in the ground going after down that.
I will tell you also, when I was teaching school, I remember telling my students, I would say, y'all know, the landfill down in S M M, excuse me, go to the landfill. This is back, way back. Y'all know that it costs one million dollars to close the cell and one million dollars to open a booth.
And that was way back.
That's what I'm talking about. But I would, I would tell my classes, and they'd look at me like, what, thirty, thirty years.
Four hundred thousand. Hey, these little stations we got, the people call me all the time.
Convenience centers.
How much did that, how much did that cost a county a year? Four hundred thousand?
Realistically, I think there's two you probably should, should, uh, consider shutting down because of the lack of use and it can move. Right, one of them were paying rent four thousand a year old. That's the one at Jim and Toad. That's right, the one that went Ottawa last. We rent that land for that. And that little, and I say it respectfully, that little bit of trash that's going, it can go to seven twenty-three no problem. And then you're probably looking at one fifty-three.
That's wild.
One fifty-three is the next lowest.
Yeah, I was trying to come up with one, I need, I need a land, I need a station down in my area. I got people gotta drive from St. Mark's to Berkle to get rid of that trash.
So, so, uh.
They ain't doing the horse and buck.
What I'm talking about.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna word, I'm gonna, I'm gonna word this different if you don't mind, so, so we get some. But I mean, instead of going, oh, St. Mark's, I'm sorry, St. Mark's.
Forty-nine from the falls, I gotta drive to Berkle.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, can I make sure everybody hear me, cause I want y'all to hear me now? So, I'm, I'm asking, can I at least have a, a motion ready to reduce the real estate tax rate from forty-eight cent to forty-five cent?
Sure have it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Eagle.
You know, I would be of that, if you good with it. If you advertise, that don't mean we going.
And so, uh, it's gonna be a motion, I'm gonna have to vote on it Thursday night. And, and like I say, it's gonna say reduce from forty-eight.
Well, y'all remember, even though this is a, a lot aired, the newspaper might run something about it. It was gonna be aired Thursday night. Once it hits the newspaper and everybody starts sharing it, you'll get the phone call.
You gonna get them now. I know ones gonna call me just as soon as that thing got off, they get.
It's already happened.
Right.
Well, let me read you what Mr. Bowen says.
Is this on our closing comment?
June seventh, closing comment, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Bowen says, six thousand one big time, warn, big time debt's coming. The county is held, is heading for a culture change when it comes to finances. That was a warning issued by Steve Bowen, Board Chair, after a public hearing on forty-eight million dollar budget. Normally, the county doesn't. Steve Bowen, board chair, after a public hearing on the forty eight million dollar budget. Normally, the county doesn't have debt, but it's coming. Sherman Vaughn says, big time.
That's when I thought of it, and I was kidding.
Well, you said it, right?
Because, because we didn't held it down too long.
But see, nobody, nobody pays attention to that. You know what I'm saying?
Well, then you know.
Well, why don't they focus on it then? Because he said it's coming back now.
But nobody says anything until we change the rate.
I don't hear a word, I do something.